Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular scheduled city council meeting of August 21st, 2024. Let the record show that all councillors are present this evening. We have ads and deletes, add consent agenda number two. Could I get approval of the agenda?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by councillor Swiber.
Support.
Support by councillor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Approval of minutes, approve the minutes of the Hibbing council meeting of August 7th, 2024 with an addition of an email that discussed on August 7th, 2024. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by councillor Whitney.
Support.
Support by councillor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Move on to the consent agenda. Number one, approve accounts payable dated 8/15/2024, checks number 178010 through 178121 in the amount of $1,676,481 cents. Two, approve accounts payable dated 8/20/24, checks number 178122 through 178141 in the amount of $419,816.93. Three, approve the city payroll dated 8/16/2024 in amount of $618,508. Four, authorize me to sign a letter to HPUC to not forgive the assessments on parcels 140-0195-00010. Five, authorize me to sign the letter of support for the Hello Range project. Six, authorize the schedule for Highlands Hills. Seven, authorize the hire of Skeeter Esti for the full-time automotive mechanic effective August 2022/2024. Eight, eliminate one full-time auto truck driver position in the sanitation department. Nine, authorize the posting of one full-time automated truck driver for the sanitation department. Ten, create post-one full-time skilled labor auto truck driver position in the sanitation department. Eleven, authorize posting of a seasonal maintenance position for city services. Twelve, accept and place on file the Hibbing police department activity report for July 2024. Thirteen, authorize the Hibbing city council to attend the following. One, the big truck night in the memorial building parking lot on Thursday, September 12th, 2024 from 5:00 to 7:00. Two, cop service cones on Thursday, September 19th, 2024 from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Three, annual fire department open house on Saturday, September 28th, 2024 from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. And last, truck retreat at city hall on Saturday, October 26th, 2024 from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. Fourteen, set the next Hibbing city council meeting for Wednesday, September 4th, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. in the Hibbing city council chamber. Fifteen, set the next city council workshop for Wednesday, September 4th, 2024 in the council chambers following the Hibbing city council meeting. And sixteen, accept and place on file the Hibbing walkability project document. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and published.
We have a motion by councillor Hoffman-Sockman. Support?
Support.
Support by councillor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. We have nothing for the public forum tonight, so we'll move on to department and committee reports. And first up is community development director, Ms. Olivanti.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Tonight I have in front of you resolution number 240803 authorizing the city of Hibbing to make application to and accept funds from the IRR's commercial redevelopment grant program. This is for 1924th Avenue East in Hibbing for Mr. Jacob Hanson to make necessary repairs to that building. He has been working with our building and housing official, Mr. Pat Green, to figure out the best way to move forward for that building. And right now, the plan would be to take off the third floor and to build a roof on the current second floor, rehab the second floor for housing, and then rehab the commercial space on the first floor. So that would be the plan as he has in front of him right now. And this grant from the IRR would help him achieve those goals.
Okay, hearing what Ms. Olivanti had to say regarding a resolution. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by councillor Whitney.
Support.
Support by councillor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Jessie.
Thank you.
We move on to city engineer, Mr. Story.
Hi, mayor, council. I'd like to publish the attached ad for the 2025 Hibbing sidewalk replacement program to accept petitions until September 20th. This will be for next year's project. As you know, the city pays 50%, residents or commercial district pays 50% of the project cost. So I'd like to just publish this ad to get a list for next year's project.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Story had to say. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by councillor Swiber.
Support.
Support by councillor Bayless. Jesse, just for, what was, how much in length did we do this year in sidewalk projects?
Length of sidewalk?
Yeah, how much volume?
The project was, I believe, about $72,000 total. I don't have the length of sidewalk that we did replace. I can get you that though, mayor.
That's fine. So we did have a pretty good investment involvement last year. Okay, that's what I was looking for. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. B.
Uh, mayor, council, the Hibbing high school is making a request to have staff parking on the west side of Ninth Avenue East between 21st Street and 23rd Street. That used to be the old bus drop-off pickup. Now that's moved to Seventh Avenue, the other side of the high school. So they're requesting that this is a staff parking, just kind of like the front of the high school. Looking at the area, I don't think this would be a problem for snow removal. That's on our priority snow road, so they wouldn't be able to park there anyways, or the residents on the other side. So they'll post the signs, they'll pay for the signs. It'll stay painted yellow, but it'll just have staff parking signs. And then they'll have an area in front of the cafeteria doors for the Boys and Girls Club drop-off and pickup.
Okay. Very good. Hearing Mr. Story had to say about parking on Ninth Avenue. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Motion by councillor Hoffman-Sockman. Support. Support by councillor Hildebrand?
Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Jess.
Thank you.
We move on to finance director, treasurer, Ms. Mulder.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. The item I have before you this evening is to approve our 2023 final reports for our financial statements. Our annual audit is complete and the final reports are within your packet. I'm just asking for council to approve them.
Okay, what we are looking for is approval of the 2023 financial statements. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by councillor Fossil.
Support.
Support by councillor Bayless. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Move on to Mr. Green. Evening, Pat.
Evening. Mayor and council, this is a public hearing for conditional use for a North Star church to move into the C2 general commercial district, which requires a conditional use for a church to move in there. Public hearing heard the applicant and they wanted to approve it. Two members to one, there was three members, to move it to the council for approval. This would be on the 200 block, the old JJ coffee shop building. The applicant is here in the audience, if they do have any questions. They did talk about parking, weddings, funerals. They do have permission from the bank, US Bank, for parking on Sundays or during the week. And the owner sent a letter also that they could use their parking lot. They would try to keep the coffee shop and run that through the church.
Okay.
As far as for the public.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Green had to say regarding conditional use permit for North Star Church.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by councillor Bayless.
Support.
Support by councillor Swiber. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Just have one comment for the gentleman that spoke at the planning and zoning commission. I watched that meeting and he did a good job of answering all the questions. And kind of...
Gekup.
Yeah, squashing the concerns of everybody. So I appreciate all of your work and patience on that process. Thank you.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's exciting that they'll keep the coffee shop open too. We move on to city service director, Mr. Rolla.
Thank you, mayor, council. Tonight in your packet, we are looking for approval for Mindview Water and Sewer Design. I have Bolton Mink here to go over any plans or any questions that you may have. We're looking to just take the next step in that process of getting the water and sewer out there, getting the plans and specs out for prospective bidders and advertising for that. If we get your approval here tonight, we would start advertising tomorrow and then our 21-day notice, or excuse me, posting for that. And we'd look to award around the September 18th council meeting, so we'd be back again for that. If there are any questions on the plans and specs, I've been here to help us out, answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, this would just all be contingent on, we locked down everything with the land rights. We do have to get DNR approval on this, so we're waiting to hear back on that, so it would be contingent on that. And also making sure we have our sources and uses lined up for funding and everything. So those two things still have to fall into place, but I think we can still advertise and bid for it. We just wouldn't award anything until that is in place, for sure.
Right, but it's good to get a bid on.
Yep. So if you have any questions, feel free to go ahead. Otherwise, looking for approval to move forward.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Rolla had to say regarding approving mining and water design up to the Mindview. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
We have motion approved by councillor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by councillor Bayless. Any discussion? I will say this, today we had Mining Minnesota, all the western states that were a mining coalition. I mean, western states all the way up to Montana, they were amazed when they were up there today. They found the whole facility top-notch and really enjoyed the history and what we're trying to accomplish up there. So this just leads into that, having a top-rate facility once we get our utilities installed. So, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Mr. Prusinski.
Mayor, city council, two items from my office this afternoon. First one is, at a previous meeting, we had a gentleman that stopped in and asked if we could run water out to the dog park in North Hibbing. So we did a site visit on that question. There is no public water out there, nor is there a well. So from a staff perspective, it looks like it would be cost prohibitive to provide water at the dog park. So kind of an update, maybe looking for some feedback. But also if we can capture, or did we capture that gentleman's name and maybe respond directly back to him? So I want to close that loop up. Any questions or concerns on that?
I do have a question. And I'm sure you thought, thank you, I'm sure you thought about this, but you know, like at the golf course, all they have are the big coolers that are out on the, on the course. Can we do something like that?
So that has been a topic of conversation. That is possible. I think the, probably the most difficult part of that would be keeping that water fresh. And also, are we going to have kids drinking it? And is there going to, I mean, it could be a challenge from that standpoint too. Organization having some exposure there. I think on our golf course, do we do like a daily or do we sanitize a couple times? So that has been a topic of conversation and that could be an option, so.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion or questions on that? Okay.
Item number two from my office. A lot of this is for our being public at home. This afternoon, in our workshop, we will be rolling out our 2025 budget, doing an update to the city council. Remember, we did set targets, under 10 for the prelim, under 5 for the annual budget 2025. We think we can accommodate that, so again, workshop coming up this afternoon. We're hoping to be able to do the full rollout on September 4th, have the city council consider and take action for a preliminary budget, so. Exciting times, I know. So with that, I'll give it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for the updates, Mr. Prusinski. All right, we move now on to city attorney, Mr. Andy Borland.
Mayor, members of the council, I believe Candy passed it out to you. Item 7A for your considerations, the resolution number 240802. This is with regard to the property about potentially detaching it from the city of Hibbing such that the city of Kiwattan could attain it through an annexation. This is the first step in that, that the city has to detach before Kiwattan can then say they want to take it on. And then it still needs to go to an administrative judge to review that process, determine if there's any public hearings necessary. Oftentimes there are when there are residents involved. This is, there is no residents, no buildings, no utilities really there yet at this point. But this is, my understanding from the previous workshops we had is that the council was interested in doing this. That's why you have the resolution before you this evening.
Very good. So are you looking for a motion for this resolution right now?
Yes.
All right.
And if the, if the council determines they want a table and discuss this further, that's perfectly fine. I just wanted to keep the ball rolling, so to speak, for you guys.
Okay. Wishes of the council.
Make a motion approved.
We have motion approved by councillor Swiber.
I'll support it.
Support by councillor Bayless. Any other discussion?
I did have one question on that one. You said it would move forward, Andy, and then they would determine if there should be any public input or public forums?
Correct. That's my understanding, councillor Fossil, is that if, if in fact Kiwattan adopts a resolution accepting this property, then those get submitted to the chief judge, I believe, of the administrative law judges. They sometimes have public hearings that they determine, not the cities determine, whether or not they need them under those circumstances. So it's a little bit at their discretion as to whether those happen or not in that circumstance.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Borland, is this something that would have gone through zoning and planning for their input as well? Or is it at the council level?
Well, the council's the one that has to make the ultimate determination as to whether they want this annexation to go forward or not. Could it be referred to planning and zoning? Sure. It's not quite the same as we're gifting property to another, or selling property. This is literally where the council's determining to give up property, and so that's up to them.
Thank you.
Yep, any other discussion?
I think, I think the biggest, biggest part is you give an example, like where the property lies, just so everybody can be like, oh, you're just giving property away, but there's a reason why we're doing it, right?
Sure, I apologize. So this property is right adjacent to Kiwattan. The city of Hibbing actually goes right to the border of Atasca in St. Louis County. But this is a relatively small parcel that's just, it's north of Highway 169, but it's, it's a small sliver just to the east of Kiwattan proper. So it's, it's, right now, it's a fairly wooded, thick area, but it's a potential for development for them. And it's easier for them, frankly, because their utilities are relatively close. If there was a development started, it would be on the city of Hibbing to extend its utilities from where they currently are all the way over to that area.
Where else?
So from a practical standpoint, if it got developed, the burden on the city of Hibbing would be great. Granted, there's a tax base you're giving up, but right now, we can't really, we don't have much there. The value of that property is relatively nil. That's kind of the trade, but it would be cost prohibitive for the city to send its utilities for an area that potentially might be developed in the future. And from Kiwattan's perspective, they've been advised that they may have to remove residents because of K-TAC in the future, so that's, they're looking at that as at least a possibility.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Borland, but this property was given to them by Hib-TAC, by K-TAC, so Kiwattan owns this property.
That's my understanding as well, but it's in the city.
It's in our city of Hibbing, but it's owned by the city Kiwattan because it was given to them by K-TAC or US Steel.
That's my understanding as well.
Yes.
And they pay no taxes on it. There's no, there's no tax laws for us.
Yeah, there's no taxes on this property, so there is no tax loss for us. It is, it is a unique piece of property, yes, some lower areas, high areas, but it is abuts adjacently to the city of Kiwattan. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Borland. Move on to bids and quotes, and again, Mr. Stories, city engineer.
Uh, mayor, council, looking into the paving project for 2025, we go through and inspect all the utilities, sanitary storm sewers. On 23rd Street, we did find four manholes that need to be rehabilitated. Attaches a quote from HydroClean for $11,960 to rehabilitate these four structures. We do have funds available under our lining project that was under budget this year, so I'm asking for council approval.
Hearing what Mr. Story had to say regarding rehabilitating four manholes on 23rd Street. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by councillor Fossil.
Support.
Support by councillor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. B, Mr. Story.
Uh, mayor, council, as discussed at a previous meeting, attaches a proposal from bar engineering to update the project storm auto modeling, review the preliminary plan from 2012. And this is on 41st Street, where the church is, where the flooding happened here this last, this last gourd with the rain event. One thing we'd asked them to look at was if they could look at different size rain events, 10-year, 15, 20-year, and give us water elevations on the existing structures that are on that area, so that's part of this modeling. They will also provide a cost estimate from the 2012 plan to what it looks like today. The cost for these two tasks is $34,800, and if we can take this out of the engineering professional services budget.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Story had to say regarding bar proposal to address flooding on 41st Street. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by councillor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by councillor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. C, Mr. Story.
Uh, mayor, council, I'm going to defer this to our fleet manager, Mr. Joe McKinney.
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, we're looking to approve replacement parts and labor for our 2007 case dozer. Um, we did a bunch of work to this last year. Um, we had a drive motor fail. This is not something that we replaced. And when this happened, it wrecks the pump, it wrecks the other drive motor, so. Um, we're kind of into this thing for a lot of money, but we have to fix it, we can still use it. So looking for approval to tighten machinery in the amount of $16,960.80.
Very good. Looking for replacement part support for the 1150K case dozer. Wishes of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by councillor Swiber, supported by councillor Bayless. Any discussion? Joe, what is, what's the length with this new part? Like you mentioned earlier, we did approve a lot of replacement parts last year. And you know, things like this happen. What, this piece, what is our life of this dozer?
So I mean, we've done a lot of track, you know, last year was a lot of the track stuff. We did replace that hydrostatic pump, which they are going to warranty just because we have minimal hours on it. But we're hoping to get, you know, two, three more years before replacement. It's not a super high priority item on our equipment list of hours of usage, so. Um, yeah, I mean, obviously stuff can fail and that's kind of what we had here, just another fail, so.
And I assume this component will keep value in this dozer when we do go to trade it in?
Yeah, all these, obviously, all these parts have helped to have the value higher, of course.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
We move on to chief of police, Mr. Esti.
Uh, mayor and council, good evening. Looking for approval tonight to make the purchase of four megafive routers for our new squads. This would be through AT&amp;T FirstNet in the amount of $5,596.
Okay, hearing what Mr. Esti had to say regarding the mobile kits for the roof power antennas. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by councillor Fossil.
Support.
Support by councillor Whitney. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. B, Mr. Esti.
Uh, and then the second part to that would be to have M&amp;M auto body install the four units. They've also done some work at the fire hall and I've heard nothing but good stuff, so looking for that amount is $1,540.
Very good. Hearing what Chief Esti had to say regarding installation. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Motion by councillor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by councillor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Budget-wise, this was just routine budget.
This will be a...
Are we doing it as undesigned funds? Do you know, Sheena?
What was that?
Or capital?
Bonch talk.
Yeah. For this stuff?
Right. This is going in the new squads, so I think it would be capital?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Where are the budgets of capital?
Yep.
Very good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Steve. Move on to fire chief, Mr. Jankel.
Evening, mayor and council. The item I have before you is an interior update project for our station two on Town Line. Um, they have a very poor bathroom shower facility. There is some interior work in the garage bays. It has sheet rock that is moldy and not in great shape. Um, and we got a couple of bids from contractors in town to do some interior remodel work and put a steel siding on the inside of the building and update the bathrooms to the standards that they need and frankly deserve. And the low bid for that was from Legend Homes in the amount of $24,160, and they were the low quote. We're asking for council approval to move forward to get this project done in 2024.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Jankel had to say regarding updates to the interior of station two. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by councillor Bayless.
Support.
Support by councillor Swiber. Uh, any discussion? I guess, chief, when, when I hear you say it's going to be starting as soon as possible.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll certainly have the vast majority of it done in 2024.
Okay, very good.
And I apologize, we do have, this is a budgeted project. It is slightly over budget, but we have some savings on a different project and some operational funds that can cover the few thousand dollar shortfall.
I appreciate that. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
There's nothing on boards and commissions. I'll move on to license and permits. One, approve the 2024 transient merchant license of Longfie Chow to operate Oriental Orchard Food Trailer. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by councillor Bayless.
Support.
Support by councillor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Number two, approve the raffle permit at request of the Hibbing Chisholm Soccer Club to hold the raffle on Thursday, September 26th, 2024 at Cheever Field. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by councillor Swiber.
Support.
Support by councillor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Move on to number three, approve the raffle permit request of the Hibbing Chisholm Ducks Unlimited to hold their raffle at Boomtown Catering on Wednesday, October 9th, 2024. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by councillor Bayless.
Support.
Support by councillor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Number five, approve the special event permit application request of independent school district 701 to host the Hall of Fame at the Hibbing Memorial Building on Saturday, September 28th, 2024. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Port by Councilor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Number seven, approve the raffle permit request application of the Hibbing Figure Skating Club to hold their raffle Saturday, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four at the Hibbing Memorial Building. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Schweiger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Move back to number four, which I had skipped. Approve the raffle permit re- request of the Minnesota Deer Hunters Association to hold their raffle at the Hibbing Memorial Building on Wednesday, October second, twenty twenty-four. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Port by Councilor Schweiger. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. That's good, because I usually go to them. Number eight. Approve the temporary on sale liquor license application of the Minnesota Deer Hunters Association to have Sportsman's Restaurant in Taverna dispense alcohol at the Hibbing Memorial Building on Wednesday, October second, twenty twenty-four. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Port by Councilor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Lastly, nine, approve the special event permit application of City Hibbing and the Hibbing Area Chamber of Commerce to hold trunk or treat on Saturday, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, on the front lawn of City Hall. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Port by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries.
Mayor, did you miss, did you miss six and eight?
You did it.
I think number six.
Did I jump six and eight too?
I think you did.
Yes, I did. Approve the special event application, number six, of the Hibbing Community College Foundation to hold the positively pickle, pickled pickleball tournament to benefit the Hibbing College Foundation on Saturday, September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Port by Councilor Schweiger. Any discussion? Hearing none? Motion approved. I did figure skating.
We should probably vote that last one. I think we covered, you got them all now.
That's it. I think it was just the one.
Yep.
Four and eight.